We get back, next on the agenda will be Superintendent of Public Work, Mr. Howard Neighbors.
Good morning Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
We've got a couple items we've still been cutting throughout the county. We've been cutting a lot of shoulders back, and that's what our big machine we've got with the butch hog head on it. We did Appalachia, East Point, some in Carabelle, Alligator Point. And now we're on St. George Island, where we have got some complaints, some people, you know, happy with it, some people ain't. So if y'all get a call on it, which everything that we're cutting is on county right of way. I'll make sure of that.
We'll move it out, bring it to Carabelle, we'll be happy to use it.
That's what I'm talking about. And also on inmate supervising, something that we've got going on that we advertised for, I had nobody advertise, what a job right there with CDL Class A license. So we re-advertised it, they got six months to get a license, so if not, terminated that six months if they can't get a license. So just trying to get some people hired, get some help. When we get through with the grass cutting, I'm hoping about the middle of December we should be finished, and we're gonna start on shoulder work, sidewalk work, a lot of hedging and shoulder work needs to be done for last year from the storm that we had. We got way behind in this, so hopefully this year we can get maybe halfway caught back up.
Well, on that, some people fussing, some people happening.
Yeah.
What you do is just make sure the public's safety okay.
Safety, that's exactly right, got a lot of overhanging limbs, bushes, and stuff that needs to be cut back, so we're taking care of it.
Make sure that's right. We go, that's all we can do.
Mr. Chairman, hey, good morning Howard. I wanted to just say thank you for the fact that there are now reflector barrels right in front of Seacrest Lane as it intersects Route 98. Looks like they're on about 100-foot centers, they're nice and large and bright, and they help remind that there's a cliff right there at that water edge, and I'm really glad they look good. Appreciate that. Also Howard, could we consider adding to the sign there at Route 98 as you turn onto Highway 65? There's a sign there that says, I think it's called Franklin County Shelter, Animal Shelter, and there's enough room to add something else.
Okay.
Say something, it would be Franklin County Humane Society Pet Adoption Center.
Okay.
Can, I think we have permission to do that, Michael, do we, could we do that?
Yeah, okay, you're talking with the state.
Yeah, talking with the state.
Yeah.
This was just adding to a sign that's right there, I think you proposed they have a problem with that Howard, so we just need to order the signs itself.
Yes, we can take care of that.
That'd be good, great.
You gonna have a motion?
Do we need a motion for that? I'd like to make that a motion.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Thank you.
And also we've got a lot of dead pine trees throughout the county since the storm come through last year. We got a call from Alligator Point, which we've cut some of them, we cut eight that we did ourselves on St. George Island last week, all pine trees. But I don't know what's killing the tree, maybe saltwater or something maybe got in there, something's killed them. But then we got another Alligator Point too, which I talked to Commissioner Bolt about, which is a big tree and it's by somebody's house, but it's on the county right of, oh wide awake, we're gonna have to get somebody hired to cut that.
Okay. I can make a motion to that.
So that would be similar to what you did in East Point?
East Point, and that was another big dead tree too that has died. Yes, and dead pine trees is a safety issue, I mean, things fall, especially in the road, kill somebody, hurt them bad, so.
Right. Do we need a motion for that?
I think Commissioner Bolt's indicated he wants to make a motion, so yes, that would be appropriate.
So I'd like to make that into a motion, so we can get that money freed up.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
That's all I got.
Okay, anybody else got anything for Mr. Howard? Keep up the good work.
Yes sir, y'all all have a package Thanksgiving?
You too.
You too.
Same to y'all. Next on the agenda will be Solid Waste Director, Mr. Funda Davis.
Good morning Commissioners, I have one item here on my report. Just to inform you all about the waste oil containers that have been placed out. Appalachia Cola, we have it on Marcus Street, at the Hauled Out Boatyard. East Point is at Brooman Park, right next to the recycle. And then East, and then Carabelle's at City Yard.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Just so the public is aware, these containers, Mr. Davis is speaking, are something we started on before Hurricane Michael, something that Ken was able to apply for a grant and add on for stuff that's hazardous material to be taken care of. And we have set up now three separate oil collection containers, East Point, Appalachia, and Carabelle, for public use, so now you're not having to wait till the landfill's open to get rid of your used oil. There'll be places in each town for, to allow for that, so that's what I'm, right?
Murder oil.
Murder oil, yeah, used murder oil.
Good deal.
Next thing, I don't have it on the report, but I would like to get the board permission to advertise for the part-time animal control officers that we discussed and that you all approved during budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
That's it, that's all I have.
That's it, okay, y'all got anything else for, anybody got anything for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Emergencies Management Director.
Pam is actually up with the staff at the office, they got a CAT-B check, category B check yesterday, they're working on some other PWs for FEMA right now, so all three are out there trying to get this accomplished as quickly as possible. So she said if you have any questions about her information items, let her know, and you know, she'll get them.
Extension order the same too, next on the agenda will be, yeah, he here. Extension Office of Direct, Mr. Eric Love, you were hiding there.
I was hiding there. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have any action items for you this morning, but I did want to just update you on the facility, the office facility. I did the walkthrough yesterday afternoon with the contractor and the architect, and everything looks pretty good. We created the punch list items, and they have 15 days window to actually finish those. And then we'll be close to starting to move our furniture over there and get set up at that facility down at the Mill Pond, so, long road, but we're almost there. Appreciate all the support that you guys have provided over the time.
Thank you for letting us know, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Eric? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Eric.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Solomon, but Michael will be standing in for TDC Administrator.
Yeah Commissioners, as you see, Mr. Solomon is attending a visit Florida Tourism Conference in Panama City Beach, he could not be here this morning. He has one action item, item number six on the agenda. The TDC Board approved recommending the pursuit of a loan which would fund the project's new construction, as the St. George Island Bathroom Project. The loan will be paid annually with the allowable 10% currently budgeted from TDC. So basically he's asking for board action to authorize the TDC to pursue this loan as funding for the St. George Island Bathroom New Construction Project, and as stated, his loan will be repaid from allowable TDC budgeted funds.
President of the Board?
Commissioner Jones is your TDC Chairman, he might have more on this item if so desired.
Same move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
All the other items on Mr. Solomon's report are information items, and feel free to get with him if you can, I think item seven and item nine, they have attachments to back up their statements, that's there.
Mr. Wrongford, Mr. Chairman, if I can say something?
Go ahead.
Just because Mr. Solomon asked me to. Last month, if you'll notice on the collections report, the TD, I say the last month reported, August, they actually had exceedingly 20% increase, so your TDC has already exceeded last year in 10 months' time, because October was a no-go, and it looks like we're gonna complete, everything from this month is additional above and beyond what was collected in previous years, just so you guys know.
That's good.
Working on your behalf, Commissioners.
That's good.
I do.
Lot of people coming down, huh?
Yeah.
Somebody coming.
Just a little bit.
Yeah. All right, well, we, it's time for the public hearing.
No sudden board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment. Okay, next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report. Good morning.
I have a consideration of a request for a variance to construct a 16 by 28 shed. Okay, can you hear me?
I do. All in favor?
This morning we have a consideration of a request for a variance to construct a 16-foot by 28-foot shed, six and a half feet into the rear setback on an existing footer foundation on property described as Lot 3, Block 103, 24 North Franklin Street, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Jason Wilson, applicant. The Board of Adjustment recommended approval by unanimous vote, so, motion to approve.
President of the Board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
And this is a footer that's already there, correct?
It's an existing footer that has been there since before he purchased the property, and it's just basically, it's not a slab foundation, it's the perimeter of a footer perimeter.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous? Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Kelly with the Planning and Zoning Report.
This morning we have a Scrivener's Era Correction. It's a consideration of a request for a Scrivener's Era Correction of an 18-acre tract known as Black Bear Bayou, lying in Section 8, Township 7 South, Range 4 West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Thurman Roddenberry and Associates, agent for John Johnson, applicant. The original map was one large map with very limited detail. About 30 years ago, the county hired Baskerville Donovan to create a zoning and land use map series, which has about 15 maps in more detail. It has been our determination that the zoning was not captured at the time when the new maps were created due to the limited detail. It was the planning and zoning's unanimous vote to approve the Scrivener's Era.
President of the Board?
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Masterson.
Yeah, that's all. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Also this morning we have a sketch plat approval. This morning it's a consideration of a request for sketch plat approval of a five-unit subdivision named Black Bear Bayou 2, a replat of lots 1 and 7 of Black Bear Bayou, lying in Section 8, Township 7 South, Range 4 West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Thurman Roddenberry and Associates, agent for John Johnson, applicant. Planning and zoning commissions unanimous vote to approve sketch plat contingent upon the Scrivener's Era being corrected.
President of the Board?
Same move.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masterson, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Number 15, I'm asking if you will table this until after the Parker public hearing, and we can take that request back up at the time after the public hearing for the Parker rezoning.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, I got a motion on the floor to table, and we gonna handle it today, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We gonna table it after we have the public hearing, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Item number 16 is a consideration of a request for commercial site use opinion of an existing commercial building within a C4 commercial mixed-use residential zoning to allow refrigeration and storage of seafood-related products within, without processing them on site. Property described as 623 Highway 98, Appalachia Cola, Franklin County, Florida. Property lying in Section 11, Township 9 South, Range 8 West. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Charlotte Snyder, applicant. Planning and zoning, theirs was a unanimous vote for approval to allow them to store seafood-related products and materials without processing, but it's the pleasure of the Board.
President of the Board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Amy, does, does the C4 allow for what they're wanting to do?
C4, C4 allows mixed-use residential, and I did not bring my zoning map book, but I can get it. But it does allow for commercial uses.
Right.
Refrigeration of hamburger, or different things like that.
Okay.
The seafood will not be processed on the site or anything, it will be refrigerated on site.
So they're asking for a very limited use?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Item number 17, it's a consideration of a request for a land use change from residential to commercial, and a rezoning change from R1 Single Family Residential to C3 Commercial Recreation. Property described as Lot 1, Block 2, Magnolia Bluff Subdivision, 100 North Bayshore Drive, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Lying in Section 36, Township 8 South, Range 7 West. Request submitted by East Point Lands LLC, applicant. Planning and zoning commission, their vote was a three to, three to two vote to deny.
President of the Board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. And what they were asking for is the right to, or not the right, but the ability to go to a public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm a Commissioner, they are allowed to have a public hearing, should they choose to.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson. We got, we got to give them a public hearing, that's the law. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Again, we have a consideration of a request for a land use change of 1.39 acres from residential to commercial, and a rezoning change from R4 Single Family Home Industry to C3 Commercial Recreation. Property described as 478 Avenue A, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Lying in Section 30, Township 8 South, Range 6 West, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by East Point Lands LLC, applicant. PNC voted Board of One to deny.
I make a motion to approve it going to a public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, same thing, we got to get to them.
Number 19.
All in favor? Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Number 19, we have a consideration for a request for land use change of a four-acre parcel from residential to commercial, and a rezoning change from R4 Single Family Home Industry to C3 Commercial Recreation. Property described as 83 Otterslide Road, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Lying in Section 30, Township 8 South, Range 6 West. Request submitted by East Point Lands LLC, applicant. Planning and zoning voted two to three vote to approve, motion failed for lack of support.
Make a motion to move to a public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Number 20, we have a consideration of a request for land use change of a 5.52-acre parcel from residential to commercial, and a rezoning change from R2 Single Family Mobile Home to C3 Commercial Recreation. Property described as 128 Patty Lane, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Lying in Section 30, Township 8 South, Range 6 West. Request submitted by Bruce and Angeline Melander, applicant. Planning and zoning commission failed for lack of a motion.
Make a motion to send it to a public hearing.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous? Okay, if 10:30, time for the public hearing.
That is correct.
Okay, we got a public hearing on 10:30, you're number 21?
Yes, sir.
It's a rezoning, okay. I'll let you take over from there.
Okay. This morning we have a consideration of a request to rezone a 10.32-acre parcel of land, lying in Section 18, Township 8 South, Range 5 West, 1849 US Highway 98, East Point Franklin County, Florida. From R3 Single Family Estate Residential to R1 Single Family Residential. Request submitted by Robin and Suzanne Ackerman, applicants. The county has not received any letters or emails in support or opposition for this one.
Okay, this is a public hearing, time for you to talk, if you want. Well, since there are no, we can, we can go ahead and vote on it.
Yes, I would call for public comment one or two more times, but...
Public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Alligator Point.
No, ma'am.
She's waiting for a different hearing, Commissioner.
Oh, public hearing on number 21, on...
Is that okay?
Mr. Chairman, it appears there is no public comment.
Okay.
Okay, without no public comment, off, President of the Board?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masterson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay. Item number 22 is a consideration of a request for a land use change of 1.04 acres from Commercial Recreation to Commercial Fishing, and a rezoning change from C3, I've just said that, that's a double. Property lying in Section 6, Township 7 South, Range 1 West, 127 Harbor Circle, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Paul and Stephanie Parker, applicants, and the county has received quite a bit of opposition on this one.
All right, this is a public hearing, public comment?
Yes, public comment.
Public comments.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Paul Parker, I'm the applicant, and Stephanie and I have lived on Alligator Point for 28 years. I know most of you here from my involvement in the county over the years. If you're not familiar with the property, I don't know if you can scroll down to the picture, but Stephanie and I, we purchased two and a half acres of the former KOA campground property, and when we purchased it, it was already C3, which is Commercial Recreation for campgrounds, fish camps, motels, and we went in and did a site plan request and got approved for my real estate office, I own a real estate company, our office is there, and then we have a site plan approval for a store, because the store was at the KOA, and when it was closed down, if you remember the South Shoal Project, we bought the commercial portion of the South Shoal Project when it went, when it went under. So we've always intended to develop it back to what it is, which is C3, where we can do cabins and RV sites, and we were approached earlier this summer by Tom McCrudden, who's here, and he's into shellfish hatchery business, and he has successfully been in that business for over 20 years and has two other locations in Florida, and he explained what a great need there is for shellfish seeds, for oysters and clams, to reseed the natural bars, and also for the developing aquaculture business. And Stephanie and I live on, that's a picture of the property when it was still the KOA, those are the cozy cabins, and that's our dock in the back. And he, you know, I know there's a demand for seed, a need for seed, because we, a lot of the aquaculture people that use the boat ramp next to our house are our friends, and they've told us that, you know, there is a need for seed for aquaculture. So what he proposed was to lease the back of our property, the lower part of our property where the dock is, to do an oyster and, shellfish, oyster and clam hatchery and nursery, where he actually spawns the oysters until they're big enough to put into the aquaculture. And because they would be spawned in the same water that they would grow out in, rather than his other projects further south in Florida, they would have a higher likelihood of survival, and obviously there's less transportation because they're right here. So he proposed to lease it. So I contacted the county, told them what he wanted to do, and at first Mark and I talked about it, and he said, "Yeah, I think you can do that under your current zoning," because we could have a bait shop as part of a fish camp, which circulates water, and that's what this project is. And he, then he called back a couple days later, and he said, "Well, there's a project in Appalachia Cola that's a hatchery and nursery, and there in C1, so we think you should rezone the portion that would be used for this project to C1." So that's when we started the process and submitted it to zoning, and that's, that's where we are today. But Stephanie and I, like I said, I'm a real estate broker, we've lived there, raised our kids on Alligator Point, and I can just tell you, I would never do anything that I thought would be detrimental to the harbor, we live on the harbor, I live right across the harbor from my commercial property, and we would never do anything that we didn't think was beneficial to the area, certainly nothing that I thought would reduce real estate values, because that's how I make my living. But I understand my neighbors' concerns that what's allowed under C1 beyond what our intention is for the property. I certainly understand and respect their opinions about it, but we believe that it's a better use of the property, because we could put, on an acre, you could put 10 RV sites and camp, camper, cabins back, and we just think that this is a less intensive use, will generate less traffic, less noise than what the property is owned for. So we're actually devaluing our property, it's really a down zoning, not just a rezoning, to a more restrictive zoning. And that's just our opinion, and we hope you will agree with us. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is you gonna put in, you plan on putting people to work?
I do. I, I don't, please understand, I'm not the operator. Tom's here, and he can talk more about that, but at least two to four people, yes, to, to grow the, to grow the oysters. Yes, sir.
How big's the building, Paul?
Building, there's, there's two, the way I understand it, and Tom can explain better, there's two buildings side by side, and they're on the higher part of the property. So our property actually goes in the X-zone, the A-zone, and the V-zone. And so one of the, one of the buildings where the, the oysters are actually spawned, and Stephanie and I went and visited Tom's other location in Cedar Key so that we could understand what he's doing. And it's a, it's an actual air-conditioned building, because that's how, my understanding, that's how they control the spawning of the, the shellfish, is by controlling the humidity and the temperature in the water. So that building is in the AE, proposed to put in the AE zone, and then in the VE zone would be a less conditioned space where the water would just circulate as the animals got a little bit bigger. So those buildings, Tom, can you...
He don't have to do no digging either, does, I mean, he's just gonna pipe it straight from the building straight to the bay, he has to do...
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And we went and visited his property there, it's the, the pumps, he said he can put those in a, in a box to make them even quieter, but it's a, you know, it's a pool pump, is what it is, and the water's returned, it runs over the different, and the different shellfish as they move through their process, and then it's returned to the bay.
After he filters it, it goes back?
That's correct. And it's very highly regulated by the State Department of Aquaculture under Agriculture, they were, they've been there at least three or four times, they went scuba diving around my dock to make sure there was no grass, and, you know, test the water quality. But that's it, I mean, we're not, there's no chemical discharge, there's no semi-trucks, we're not trying to do a boat landing, but that's our, that's, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Would that mean it won't be too much noise, and it won't be too much traffic?
They...
Four, five people working?
Correct. Based on what we saw at the other operation, there was just one person there when we were there that operates, because it's literally just circulating water. Once the animals are spawned, they're just being moved from tank to tank.
Okay. Anybody else got any more questions?
Mr. Parker, I might have a question in a minute, but right now I don't have one.
No problem. And like I said, Tom... And like I said, Tom McCrudden, who's the gentleman that proposed it, he's here, and he can answer questions about the more specific operation.
All right, next, public comment?
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Bob Lemey. I live on Alligator Point, just about a hundred yards up the coast from Paul's property. And Paul did approach the Taxpayers Association with a presentation that described what he has in mind, and he has said it will be small buildings, low buildings, there will not be a visual obstruction, there will be no noise, no smell, no pollution in the bay. Well, perhaps, and I would not argue this, but that is not really the problem. The problem is the future owner. All properties eventually sell. That happens. Properties turn over, Paul might move out of state, he might die, we don't know, but eventually, all properties are sold. Once this is rezoned as C-one, we now have a greater issue. And if I can quote here, Z-one zoning would allow, and this would make it legal, intensive seafood processing, including but not limited to oyster shrimp and fin fishing processing. This would be a process with a lot of odor in the neighborhood. Docking and landing facilities with special provisions for commercial fishing boats. Again, odors and a lot more traffic if this were to come to be, both traffic in the bay and traffic on our road, and the road is fragile. Number three, support facilities, including boat building. If that is allowed, and somebody does make a boat building facility, we now have a noise problem. Number four, marine culture, shore facilities, including shellfish rearing, fattening, and crab culture. I'm sorry, but these do not belong in a residential neighborhood. Number five, according to the zoning manual, number five is undetermined uses, then there are accessories that allow for other things that are unspecified, special exemptions. We don't know what problems these are for a residential community, and it is completely residential around Paul's property. We live there, these are our homes. If you're thinking that these things will never happen, then there's really no need for the zoning. But if you allow the zoning change, there's potential for these damaging things. Paul says it will not degrade our property values, but if any of these facilities are built in the future by a new owner, we will have odors in the neighborhood, we will have greater traffic, there will be noise, and you've got to know that our property values will go down. Maybe not while Paul owns the property, but properties eventually sell, and it's the future use that we're worried about. It will impact our neighborhood, our, our style of life, and Alligator Point is a pristine place to live. We love it there. But it will be less if it becomes commercial. Maybe the detrimental things will not happen under Paul's plan, but if you allow the rezoning, you make it possible for other people in the future to rather destroy this beautiful place where we live. I've got to ask you to deny the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just make a public announcement.
Who is it?
Just so the public is aware, the board's public comment policy is to limit individual comments to three minutes per person, or five minutes per person under public comment if you're speaking on behalf of an organization or a group of people. So, I mean, we're not...
If I went long, I apologize.
No, no. It was my mistake for not announcing earlier, and you did fine. I mean, you were just slightly, it was no big deal, it's not a problem, but just, just as a courtesy to other people that want to speak, there's a lot of people in the room, I'm not sure who all is exactly here to speak on this public hearing or the next, but just try your best, please, to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
My name's Carol Rippey, and I own property about four lots north of the last speaker. Our fight, again, is on the zoning, and, you know, things happen in life, we all, we all go forward. I know we're dealing with chickens right now, because everybody wants a chicken in their yard. These, these flopsies, flupsies? Is that what they're called? Flupsies, flopsies, right?
Nursery system.
Yeah, well, they're flupsies, and they float in the ground, and the Department of Agriculture puts out a notice for the, to be able to use the property that is underwater. It's not the county's, it's the state water. So the first thing they have to get is a lease to use that property, and the second thing they have to get is an upland certificate if they are gonna make the seeds that go into these flupsies, flopsies. Many people in the state of Florida have flupsies. You don't need anything attached to the land to do, to do that. I can ask for the state to use my dock and put flupsies on it. It's when you ask to make the seeds that you have to go inland and get the generators and the things that keep this system going. The Department of State thinks this is a good thing for our area, we really need the seeds, but we are against the zoning for the reasons that he stated before. I know that Paul said that, I mean, we have a disagreement on what a fish camp is. A fish camp, to me, is a restaurant area for fishermen to camp in. It's not a place to have a bait shop. We were used to the RV park there anyhow. We're not, we don't mind RVs, that's what it was.
Ma'am, when you're talking, address the Commissioner, don't address the public.
Gotcha. And we're also dealing with road and equitable costs. What would the businesses be charged for the, the road that we're talking about, for the beach protection, the road protection? I'm not here to go over their plan one way or the other, because we have not been given the plan. I know that the agriculture, if they get the zoning, they will give them, they will give them the certificate to do it, so we really can't fight that. We, whether it's good or bad, we can't fight that. It's considered good for our harbor area. But I think the zoning needs to be addressed. The zoning needs to be upgraded to this environment where we need these flopsies, where we don't need the detrimental things that are listed in your C-one. So I ask for you to revise that, or look at C-two even, and maybe because it's a commercial activity where he will be selling his seeds, maybe get it under that. Just look for options that we don't have to go and do something for the future that might really harm us. We're dealing with something in Tallahassee right now, where people can't even rent their house because of a zoning change that happened fifteen years ago. So it could happen. It could happen.
You're not gonna have a lot of traffic, because you can haul ten thousand oysters in, in a little bag.
Oh, it's not the traffic, it's, it's the...
Okay, but you're not gonna, he said you're not gonna have a bunch of commercial boats coming in, because you have no water in there. It's very shallow and all around Alligator Point. You can't get big boats in there.
This is true. This is true, but you could, but you could sure start shucking them. I mean, you could, you could do that right there.
You can't get a big boat around the port inside of the, in the harbor.
I don't know if they can dredge for that or not. That would be a future thing.
You couldn't dredge that far around the port, come around the cove into there.
I know, I can get my big boat in there, so it's not...
It's not real big.
It's a contender. It's pretty big.
Yeah, I'm talking about a forty-feet-foot boat, you're not gonna get into harbor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ann Barzak, one seventy-three Harbor Circle. Yesterday, submitted to the Commissioners a letter, and I believe it's in your file. There's two pages at the back, the last two pages, that I'd like to reference, and I hope you can see the graphics that I want to talk about. I have copies, Michael, if they don't have it in front of them, the last two pages. I've known Mr. Parker for many years, and I consider him a friend, and, but, in, on this project, I can't support his, his efforts towards this project. So the last two pages. I'd like to point out...
Thank you.
...the placement of the two buildings, two, three thousand square foot buildings, that's pretty close to a normal house size at Alligator Point, back to back in that property. And if you would see the proximity to the adjacent residential property, it's very close. That operation is within, I don't know the measurements here, but maybe that's seventy-five feet away from a residential property that people have owned, and then alongside of it, almost at the border of the next property, and you can see the border of the next property on the last page that I tried to outline for you, highlight. You know, see where the car is? Their property line is right there, about where that car is, and alongside on Paul's property is a proposed road. How is that going to harm that residential property, so they can enjoy the property as they would like, instead of having a commercial business with a road right alongside their border? That doesn't seem plausible to me, that you would do such. The other thing I'd like to point out is the placement of these structures are on the left, the westmost boundary of the property, allowing for potential further expansion of this type of business to the east. So are we talking about a limited facility today, but with the potential of growth tomorrow? Thirdly, I'd like to mention this alternative. A few, a month or so ago, you guys had asked the state to see if the FSU property could be used as a boat launch, and I don't know if you received comment back from them or not, but you had asked the state for your use of that property. Can you also consider working with the Department of Agriculture and DEP to allow for a facility at Bald Point State Park, also close to the clamming and oyster industry, but away from residences? It would be in that water system that seems to be preferred for hatchery. Would that be an alternative? Logging takes place on state parks. Would they think about dedicating a parcel of land for a boat launch, for a hatchery, for parking, that would be dedicated to them and not be in the middle of residential property? I've owned property there for forty years. I'd like to continue to use it the way I've always used it. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Chwalick.
Good morning.
My wife and I are homeowners of one thirty-five Harbor Circle, immediately adjacent to the proposed project, so I figured this was a good point to jump in, since we had just addressed it. If you see the site plan there, more than half of it's over marsh, sensitive marshland. We're dealing with a residential community and land on the Alligator Harbor Aquatic Preserve. My home, we talked about seventy-five feet or so, when I first bought my home a decade ago, it was with dreams and sacrifices, and my kids have grown up there, splashing around in the bay with their cousins and friends, and God willing, I'd like to continue those plans through retirement and see a next generation happen there. And we're not talking about seventy-five feet. When I bought the property, Paul told me he might put a small store there, maybe a restaurant, if the area would support it, and with the size of the land and the buffering, it would be, it would fit within the community, much like his, a credit to Paul, his real estate business does look any, like any other coastal property with the metal roofs and the siding. But now we're talking about tanks. Paul himself just said, he doesn't know, he's just gonna hand it over to this out-of-county business. And I, I submit to you, it's not worth two jobs and out-of-county profits, based on all the voices you've just heard from our neighborhood. And the bay, it is shallow there. We're talking three miles into an aquatic preserve that has no freshwater flush, has very few tidal flush either. The oyster hatcheries are further up, closer to area on ninety-eight. This area is more likely to see paddleboards, kayakers, johnboats, but I have seen some boat traffic come through there, checking on the tanks, now that they're there. And that's just not what this area is for. The residents of Alligator Point enjoy our serenity and the ecological concerns, and I could get further into this, but I'd just be reiterating some of the points you've already heard this morning, and probably all stood by mail. So I'll just leave it at that to say I'm concerned, again, not just about this project, but about future use. And as far as this current project, I know there are reassurances. There are reassurances, it won't be that bad, but not that bad, it's still bad. And the chances to alter the project or make it better, the easiest answer is, just don't do it. It's a residential community. It's never had this kind of activity. It shouldn't have this kind of activity. So, in closing, again, I'd just like to say my concerns over the project, and I hope that you'll consider the voices of this community to address both the residential and environmental concerns. Again, we know what it's like when a project gets put in place. It's far removed. What's gonna happen? There's no details here on light, sound, decibel, setbacks. None of that information is here. And as far as the environmental aspects of, I mean, what if a batch of spat dies? Are we throwing it in the harbor? Are we throwing in the marsh? Are we putting it by a dumpster? This sounds like the activities that maybe rodents, feral cats, and raccoons might like, but not residents in a neighborhood. So, again, not bad is still bad. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bob Glazier. I live at one thirty-six Harbor Circle. I live directly across the street from the last speaker. It's interesting, I recently got to know him a little bit over the last couple of weeks, and he invited us to go back into his yard. Never knew how pretty it was. Wow, I was taken aback, because I said, "This is a beautiful piece of property." And then I kind of glanced over to the right, and then I saw some floating, I guess they're hatcheries. And I think, "Well, what is that?" And they're like, "Well, that's some type of oyster operation." I wasn't aware of it. Then I had another friend just recently moved adjacent to one forty-zero, and I'm talking on behalf of them, Karen and Alan Davis, and I got to go in their backyard Sunday. Looked out, looked down the way, there it is. Plain as day, white, floating, oyster processing. I don't know what they are. Bert, you might be able to, or Paul, could you, I know you had to address them, but I don't know what they're called. But it was apparent to me that, you know, I don't see them, but they see them. Well, that goes far down, probably a quarter mile, you can see that. So it's just not him right there. It's that whole harbor circle on that water. It's beautiful. It's gorgeous. And I get, I have friends that are oystermen, close friends, guys that I fish with, I get it, you know? I think it's a great opportunity. I just don't know it's for Alligator Point. It's this community, and we've had a lot of issues. Franklin County's had a lot of issues, and I think for the first time in a long time, we've all kind of come together. After Michael, I was here two days after Michael on that board meeting, and I've seen a lot of changes. Bert's done a great job. Every one of you guys have really kind of paid attention to us. I'd ask you to pay some more attention, like you've done over the last year since Michael. You've done a great job, and we appreciate that. This one here has kind of caught us off guard. I think there needs to be more information that needs to be put in front of us, and, you know, and I don't know Paul personally, but I will attest that Paul has done nothing, but always had the best sense, it's the Alligator Point, and I know that from whatever one has said and what I've seen. You know, there is a proposed fire department going right next to his building. That's gonna be another site. I'm sure it's gonna be beautiful. I'm sure it's not gonna be white and red, and there's not gonna be sirens out in front of it, and I'm just making light of that. But, but, you know, another issue that, that has to be addressed, too, is that any of you, and I know every one of you have been on that road in front of Paul Parker's, and you see that stop sign, and you see that curve right there. I personally have had to slam on my brakes at least ten times to stop. Car's not stopping at that stop sign. So there will be more traffic. There is, there's gonna be an incident there, and I know that we're not supposed to have golf carts that aren't, that aren't DOT certified, and I get that, but that's just not the reality. And I can't tell you how many kids, how many adults I've seen almost hit on that corner. So there's gonna be... So there's gonna be an impact with traffic. There's gonna be an impact with our property values. But more, more than anything, it's just that, I just think that Alligator Point is Alligator Point. We've got two commercial sites there. We've got the marina, and we got Paul Parker. And both of those have done a really good job keeping a minimal footprint on Alligator Point. So please, just allow us to gather more information, be more informed. I think there's a couple other speakers that are gonna provide some insight to this, but just give us a chance to have a fair shake at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Steve Fling. My house is within three hundred feet of this proposed development. When I bought that house, probably eight to ten years ago, there was a hatchery, or business, which was a hatchery, a clam hatchery, going next door. I can personally testify, it was noisy. I can personally testify, it vibrated my entire house. So I just, we have to have positive controls over what we're gonna have here or what we can expect. I've lived on Alligator Point for forty-two years, and I love our oysters as much as anybody does. I'm here to ask us, or ask you, to postpone any decision on this zoning change. We need to table it until we know what it can bring, not what's being proposed right now, but what this new zoning may do to us. Some of the concerns, and you've heard them here, noise levels, the lighting, the traffic, the odors, possible pollution into the harbor. As you know, the harbor's completely closed. There's no flushing. Before we go forward with any action, let's know the full extent of the zoning change. And then we need controls on what the future can bring. C1 allows, it just allows too many unknowns. I paid my property tax last week, sixteen hundred and eighty dollars. It's my home, it's my biggest investment. This project is gonna devalue my home. There's, you can't get around that, but that's what will happen. Let's move slowly and carefully. Let's not jeopardize or cause harm, home, to my home, my community, and our environment. We've got neighbors, or I've got neighbors here from St. Teresa and Alligator Point who have serious concerns, and I, can y'all stand up and just let everybody?
Sir, sir, if you will, address the public.
Okay, well, can they, can they stand up so you see them?
Yeah, they can stand up, I have no problem with you.
They're not all gonna speak, so we just want you to know how concerned we are.
We ain't got no problem about them standing up.
Thank you.
We want you to address the.
Yes, I don't represent these people, but I feel they all have grave concerns about this development. And once again, I would just ask you, let's postpone it. There's no rush. Let's know what we may get into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Tom Hines. I live on Peninsula Circle, not too far away. I've done business with Paul, he's a great guy. I think the big concern I'm hearing about this present operation, which doesn't really scare me, I have a small business, I have over forty employees, so I know the importance of employees. One or two is not gonna change your, your situation here in Franklin County. But it can change my property values. I have a cousin who's looking to buy a home next to me, moving from Colorado. I know he's not excited about the potential change in the zoning, and that's what I'm looking at. It's not this project that bothers me, it's what could happen. It's the fact that the buildings in the future could go up to thirty-five or forty-seven. I've heard two different potential heights in the sizes of these buildings. That affects the view for a lot of people when you start doing something like that. Just so happens, Paul told me, and I believe him, that he owns probably the highest piece of property out there on the point. It's safe. And, but if you put a thirty-five or forty-seven foot tall building there at some point in the future, it's gonna be seen from about every angle, and that's my concern. RV parks, don't bother me. I own RVs, I go around the country camping, so if Paul wants to go ahead and do the RV thing, I'm all for it. I have no objection to that. But when you start, it's like I say, it's not this project that bothers me, it's the exposure of the next owner. And there'll be, we'll have no meetings then. We won't be here to talk about it. We won't be here to consider it. The consideration is being done today. So I ask you to, I say, no more studies, I say, let's just deny it flat out and find another way around it. Let's see if we can do an exception to the rule. If you wanna do this one project, I'm all for it. So that's my saying. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Swatka. I live at thirteen oh five Angus Morrison Road. I've been a homeowner on the point since nineteen eighty-five. My property directly views the back of Paul Parker's property, the property in question, and I have full view of the area that he has debated putting two fifteen hundred square foot buildings on. I'm opposed to the zoning changes. It will irreparably change the residential nature of our community. It will bring in commercial fishing operations. There will be increased noise pollution, light pollution, and pollution from the smell of the operation. And that's if the electricity is working. If we lose power, as we do frequently on the point, there will either be the noise of generators or increased problems with pollution. Our property values undoubtedly will be hurt by this operation. Tax revenues to the county will be hurt as a result of our property values going down. The parcel of land currently zoned C3 is not located in a commercial area. The one point oh four acres is in the middle of a longstanding residential neighborhood. There is no need to change the zoning on that property while there is sufficient property on Highway ninety-eight or Bald Point to accomplish the operation that they are trying to achieve. Mr. Parker has stated publicly that he has an alternative business plan for his property that could be achieved under his current zoning, and I fully support that operation. I ask the county commissioners to vote against this highly detrimental voting, zoning change, which would permanently destroy not the immediate area, but the entire residential nature of Alligator Point. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa West. I'm at forty-one oh six St. Teresa Avenue. My grandfather built our house. I remember as a young child getting debris from Alligator Point after Hurricane Agnes. We get debris from big storms all the time, from across the bay. My concern is, well, how will this impact us across the bay? And if there should be some sort of mishap with these scat houses? So, and I expressed concerns to my neighbors, and they said there's no way that this would pass because of the detrimental environmental effects, and that's why oysters processing, et cetera, is in, well, color counting. They, they were surprised to hear about this issue in Franklin County. So I can't speak for them, they're not here, but I think that there is concerns along St. Teresa as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Vernon Sanders. I have a home at thirteen oh eight Peninsula Circle, which is between where Tom is and where Ms. Swatka is. I also have owned my property since the early seventies. I raised my kids there. They played in the bay. We enjoy a beautiful view down the bay. And I'm not concerned about what, as much about what Paul wants to do, but I am concerned about what this zoning that he's proposing allows in the future. So I think that, I agree with the people who have spoken already, that we should either postpone or get better control over the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nancy Wadner, and I live at two fourteen Harbor Circle, and I am a full-time permanent resident. And I just wanna say that I'm opposed to this rezoning. I'd like to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Howard Trammell, and I too am a full-time resident at Alligator Point. I live at twenty-one here in Morrison Island, which is right around the corner from this property. And I would just like to state, I think all the reasons have been given, I would just like to state that I agree with the opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lyra E. Rath, and I live at thirteen oh one Angus Morrison Road, which is right in the same neighborhood that will be impacted by this. And when we purchased our home there about nine years ago, and there was, never did we have any consideration or knowledge that there would ever be a commercial property near our home. We have a salt cut that comes right off the harbor, that's right into our backyard, that will be two hundred, three hundred yards from this facility. And we value our wildlife, our birds, and our serenity where we live. And as I said, when we purchased our home, and we live there, we are permanent residents, we are full-time residents, and when we purchased our home with the understanding that this was a residential neighborhood, this fishery will be placed right in the middle of the point, dividing all major residential areas. And I strongly, strongly oppose this. Thank you.
Is it permissible for me to speak again?
Just one moment, please. Mr. Chairman, we have apparently two individuals who have already spoken that want the board to consider taking further public comment, but while I think about that, let's see if I may call for additional public comment for anyone who has not yet spoken. May I do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
For anyone who has not yet spoken out on this issue concerning the Paul Parker request to rezone from C3 to C1, is there anyone else who has not yet spoken publicly who would like to speak publicly? Yeah? Good. Typically, we don't allow double dipping.
Thank you. My name's Tom McCrudden, and I am the proposed hatchery owner for the proposed project we're looking at. And I understand the residents' concerns about the zoning smell, all the different issues they're bringing up. And I understand we don't wanna devalue their properties or hurt any, anything, or create smell or any issues. We're hoping to improve the quality of the bay with restoration, providing seed to the oyster farmers, which they cannot get the seed. I know a lot of the, some of the comments I've heard about other areas, it's very difficult to find a suitable area to do this. I've been doing this for about twenty-three, twenty-four years now. I have a facility down by Stewart on the East Coast. I've been at the same location for, for twenty-three years. I have another facility over in Cedar Key, and we're proposing this, this location because of the site suitability. We really, I believe that the benefits will outweigh the negative aspects of, you know, and any of the things we can address, the low-profile buildings, we don't need tall buildings, we can noise-soundproof things, there's really no noise, no lights, no smell, generators. By having other facilities, if there's a storm coming, I can remove the product from the location from here and move it to one of the other sites. We're also looking at a site down in Southwest, down by Naples as well. So in the event of some, some kind of an issue or a storm or water quality event, we can remove all the animals, the seed is what they're called, and, and transport them to a different location. So we don't have to run, we don't have to have generators and noise and things like that. And then, of course, there wouldn't be the smell of them dying or anything like that. You know, I've worked with the DEP, the, all the different universities, we wanna work with Florida State with their restoration efforts as well. They're, they're on the research side, but there's no commercial, you know, angle to what they're doing. They would need a private hatchery to do this. I've been doing this longer than anyone in the state with oyster, oyster work, restoration. I've been working with various groups on the East Coast. I work with Florida State, up, up the whole East Coast of, of the United States as well. We've done genetic work, restoration projects, you know, around the, you know, the country, mainly the East Coast of, of the United States. We can, like, as I said, we can address the different issues, you know, with, with I think the benefits of what we can do, improving the live animals out in the bay. I know there's been some die-offs. By having a local facility, we can use, we can genetically retrieve the animals that are surviving these events, work with Florida State, and collaborate with them to figure out, hey, what's going on, and commercially do the restoration. There's, there's numerous articles and publications on the benefits of oysters. I think you guys all agree, I don't think anybody has a problem with the oysters, removing nitrogen, the, improving the water quality and things like that. So we really hope to improve this bay to, you know, historic levels of, of, you know, animals out there and the habitats. So if you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. I don't think so right now. I have some thoughts for later.
Y'all hold it a minute.
Come on up, Tom.
The lady asked me where the water's coming from. I would, I would take it from the bay, I would pump from the bay, filter it, and use it in my facility, and then it is redischarged back. And that's governed through Division of Aquaculture, FDACs. And the water leaving our facility is cleaner than when it came in. So we're viewed as a beneficial, we're not a fish farm or shrimp farm where we're adding food and, and things like that. So the water leaving our facility is cleaner than when it comes in. So we're actually filtering and cleaning the water and putting it back in a better condition than when we got it.
Yeah, the place you have the Cedar Keys is very clean. I've been there.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Okay, thank you.
If you would, just one second. Mr. Chairman, if I may, if there are those that have spoken or those that have questions that you would like to have answered either by Mr. Parker or, I'm sorry.
McCrudden. McCrudden.
McCready?
McCrudden.
Yes, sir. If there's any questions for either of these two gentlemen, if you would address those questions to the board, then the board will see which one of them would be the best person to respond, if there are any direct questions that y'all would like to have answered. I'm sorry?
So I wasn't aware we had a problem with our.
Wanna come up, come up front, sir. Come up front.
Yeah, Mr. McCrudden, he talks about restoring in our bay.
We don't have a problem with our bay. Our bay is healthy, it's untouched, it's natural. What's he gonna, what are, what are we restoring?
Our oyster bar's gone over in Appalachia Cola Bay, you didn't know that?
I'm not referring to Appalachia Cola Bay, I'm talking about our bay and our backyard.
What they doing, growing oysters there, they, they can't catch them out here, so they putting them in their little baskets and growing them.
Right, that's our natural filter.
Yeah, they grow their oysters down there.
But he talks about wanting to restore, we don't have, our bay's fine.
I think what he's expressing, and if, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, gentlemen. I think what he's expressing is, the only people they would potentially be selling to would not be just those that operate in Alligator Harbor, but there's a real move to restore our bay, and FSU through Triumph has gotten monies to pursue what, if we can genetically come up with some of the kind of species that'll grow with the lack of fresh water that we are gonna continue historically with the Florida, Georgia water wars. So it's more than just Alligator Harbor, the gentleman was referring to is what I, what I understood. Because they're not just gonna be selling to those people with leases in the harbor.
Yeah, I think, my interpretation is two different subjects.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. But my concern is, what we're talking about here is, and I, and I'm, like I said, I'm not for or against, I just need to know more information, but he was talking about restoring something that I think we're okay. More clarification.
Thank you.
Another person had their hand raised.
We had a couple.
Yes, ma'am, what was your question?
I was recent.
What?
I'm sorry. I was recently at a meeting with Mr. Parker, who said the reason he was brought to the attention that he had to become C one rather than C two is because there's already this type of operation that's C one in Appalachia Cola. So that's y'all's, that's that bay restoration. And so if Alligator Point doesn't need it, I mean, if Alligator Harbor is fine, why are we taking the risk of discharging something from these hatcheries back into our waters?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
One thing, the water where he's growing the oysters down there, that's used to that water right there. You can move that oyster down this end, it won't hardly live because it's a different type of water on this end of the bay than it is that end of the bay.
Yes, ma'am.
That lady right there? Oh, right next to the gentleman there? No, not, not, no, not you, the one, the one next to the man in the sweater.
Yeah, I think he's going to ask her question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good.
I focused on the future impact of a different commercial outfit in that area, and it could be damaging. What I'd hoped, my, one of my neighbors would point out, is in that crook there, in the crook of the shaded area, there is, or if I would guess, two, three, maybe four acres of marsh grass, and it is a constant habitat for egret and great blue heron. If something happened, we have an environmental impact on grasslands and bird wildlife in the area. Now, I don't know what will happen, it could be a loss of electricity that spoiled the hatchlings, it could be a storm, it could be a boat coming up to move the oysters out that spills some oil. I don't know what might happen, but things do happen. And if they happen here, it is in grassland that is a sanctuary, well, it's not a sanctuary, but it is a habitat for great blue heron and egret, part of the quality of our life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question, ma'am?
One last question.
This lady in the back.
Commissioners, would you ask Mr. McCready if he's associated with Southern Cross Sea Farms, if that's the business he has in Cedar Key?
Okay.
It is?
No, no, we're gonna have them stand up and address these questions as soon as they want us to finish.
Okay, the only reason why I'm asking is that in the letter that I submitted to you, I show an aerial of that particular business, and if you would look at it, it's, you know, it's on State Road twenty-four, a very narrow strip of road that goes into Cedar Key, and it shows the operation there. But there's no homes, like we have at Alligator Point, on either side of that business. There's one tiny, very modest house to the right of some structure that's in that area, but as far as a residential area, no. And so that's my concern, that this project does not belong in the residential area. And if you would still consider an alternative plan to look at a possibility of placing a developed facility in Bald Point State Park, that would be my preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I am actually curious about the discharge, we're talking about the water being cleaner, but any organism makes waste. It's my understanding, oysters make nitrogen pellets, and I just don't know where that's going, if it's just water coming in and water going out, is it just go with its spat? So that is a question. And the other question, and pardon the sarcasm, does the gentleman owning the business live within twelve feet of his beautiful facility in Cedar Point?
If, if it is the intent of the county to make the oysters better around this area and save this area, is there any county property along Highway ninety-eight that can be considered for this instead of this residential area?
You wanna?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no more questions, it would be appropriate at this point for either Mr. Parker or Mr. McCrudden to answer the questions that have been proposed to the board by the public. And I mean, maybe a group effort.
Well, I'll let Tom answer the questions about the operations. I've only seen his operation, but in terms of the water discharge, I don't have the answer.
Okay, well, the one question about Southern Cross Sea Farms, I'm not involved with that, and they're a separate business. The other question was about the discharge, and that is regulated by FDACs, as I said. We have BMPs, Best Management Practices, we have to follow, and they come and inspect us to ensure that we're in compliance with that, that there's no ill effects of our, our business. And as I said before, we're viewed as, as beneficial as opposed to a fish or shrimp farm that's actually, does have some negative aspects to their business. Was there any other questions? There, and the Bald Point location, like I said, the location that, that Paul has is, I've been, I've been doing this for a long time, you can't just pick any property because of the water quality, the way, where it is situated, that's why this, this location was selected. And another question about the oysters dying, they, they have been, the native oysters have been dying off in the bay, and that's one of the issues. We do want to restore, it's happening all around the whole state, not just here. And that's why having a facility right here to be able to, to acclimate and have the animals suited for this bay would be a phenomenal asset to the county to, to be able to do the restoration. We would produce the seed from the animals that are surviving. And I think somebody said a different species, I believe you had mentioned, it's, there's native species, it's virginica, is, is the native oyster species here. It's the genetics of, of the local animals that we're looking at. We're not, you, you would, we would never do a non-native species. So it's the same species, it's just the genetics of the animals coming from these areas and that are able to, that are resilient to survive through certain events, whether it's a dissolved oxygen, salinity, heat, whatever the issue might be. Some animals can survive it, and that, and where the other ones are dying off. So we want to try to dial in on, hey, how can we restore the bay and, and improve the water quality is the ultimate goal? Because it's my best interest that the water quality is as best as possible, and not deteriorate the water quality.
Let me ask you a quick, um, I guess, are you trying to say, well, like, you got that area there, and you grow the seed, they wouldn't grow good in another place?
Not really. A lot of the, I know there's another facility over in Appalachia that, that is right by the river, and, and the, the reason that that, I don't prefer that location is the salinity. When they get heavy rain events, the, the salt content is gonna drop out over at that area. This is a very stable area for the, for the water quality, is, is what I'm looking at. So it's very difficult to find a suitable area to do this. And I understand everybody, you know, doesn't, not in my backyard, nobody wants it, but what we're doing is a really good thing for the environment, for the county, that helps the water, you know, all the aspects of it is, is very favorable. And we are willing to work, like I said, with, with the aesthetics of the building, the noise, the lights, I mean, we really shouldn't have any of the issues with any of those concerns.
But what, I guess my question would be, when you grow them out of that area, would they be able to grow in another area?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, the area here is pretty suitable to most of the other areas in the state. You know, so some areas where the low salinity, we probably wouldn't be able to do a low salinity animal out of this facility if, if somewhere where, where it's, it's much closer to the bay or things like that. That, that would probably not do well at this facility. So this, this facility would mainly be focused on oystermen in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may inquire, did you have a question, sir?
Just, we're getting off focus, we're not against this business, it's the zoning for the future business in the next twenty years.
We understand, yes, sir. Well, Mr. Chairman, we've had the present, Mr. Parker, do you have any further presentation to make?
No, sir, no, I'm, I'm happy to try to answer any other questions.
You've got up to twenty minutes, and you still have some of that twenty minutes left, so if you're done, you're done, but I want to make sure you do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really, I just, again, it's already, a couple of statements have been made that, that property, it's a residential neighbor. I mean, I didn't change the zoning to commercial, I bought it, it was already zoned, it was our, it was actually, it just closed as an actual operating campground with, I think there were nine between the cozy cabins and the spa, and the campsites and permanent mobile homes that were on our property. I think there were a total of nine buildings or facilities. And I just think this is a less intensive use than it, but it's always been zoned commercial since Dr. Tuck developed the campground in the seventies, as far as I know.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, you, you've heard the presentation from the party applicant, you've heard public comment, the questions, the, the public wanted to have asked and answered have been asked and answered. You're now appointed procedurally to discuss this among yourselves. Before you do, I wanted to also announce for the record that previously Commissioner Bolt had consulted with me in the recent past, I, I think it may have even been about this particular matter going to a public hearing or something of that nature. And at that time, he had a voting conflict of interest because of an ongoing contractual relationship, basically it was a real estate listing agreement, I mean, with Mr. Parker's business. That contract is no longer in force and effect, so therefore, it is my opinion that Commissioner Bolt no longer has a voting conflict, and he, he can and should and must vote in this matter. With that, y'all are free to discuss this matter among yourselves.
Thank you.
All right, with that, let's go to the president of the board, let them discuss.
Mr. Chairman, there are so many complexities about this particular zoning proposal. I think we should table it and do more homework. Perhaps as a way of even customizing the proposed C one zoning to meet many of the concerns that residents have, to look at the traffic issues, to look at the noise issues, to see how we can mitigate generator noises and things like that, and, and study this in detail. I believe that the tabling should also be complemented with a site plan, so that we can get more visualization of what's happening out there. And I believe that that will give us the quality that's been expected here today, a little bit better outcome and a better study for a future hearing. And I'd recommend that we table it for the purpose of adding more study.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Attorney Schuler.
Yes, sir.
When we're going through processes like these, they're changing from one zoning to another, and there has been some sentiment among the opposition that they're just as much oppositional to the potential uses as they are to, to anything else. When we're changing this, if it were something that Mr. Parker wanted to agree to limit his C one use, would that actually be placed on the deed for the property and prevent any further, in other words, whoever potentially bought the property would be restricted to those uses that Mr. Parker agreed to, or is that incorrect?
Commissioner Jones, I have heard the same thing you've heard from some, many of the people who, who spoke today, and, and to answer your question specifically, there are limits and conditions that the board always has the authority to place on rezoning matters, but generally, that's more related to, you know, we want to buffer, we want something, but not limiting and preventing their use. So Mr. Parker would have to voluntarily agree to limit his C one uses to say, I don't, we're talking about an oyster hatchery, so just for purposes of discussion, I think he could, and I could draft, if that is the will of the board, and, and Mr. Parker voluntarily agrees to it, a deed restriction, limiting the use of the property just to an oyster hatchery. Now, that, that I think would address and resolve, you know, a number of the complaints I've heard here today, but there were also other complaints just opposing the hatchery itself, and it would not resolve that. But I, I think if Mr. Parker voluntarily agrees to the limitation, yes, it can be done, and limit C one use just to this oyster hatchery.
Okay.
How many people stay in, how many people stay in this area?
How many people live there, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
You got a number there? Anybody, can anybody tell me?
It's dense.
Yeah.
Specifically around the project, or I found you a point on one of them?
Yeah, around, both, around the, around the area and in Alligator Point.
Mr. Chairman, I do not know the answer to that question.
Allen, do you know?
Come up to the, what you got an answer for that deed?
Paul would know as well as anybody, there's about eight to nine hundred homes.
Within, within, Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens Franklin County, we've got about fourteen hundred deeded lots within five miles of that location, give or take a couple hundred, probably about five hundred houses within that, within that same five mile zone. And I know that because the fire station is very close to there, and I've read those figures in the past. Steve, you concur? Sorry.
Yes, there's a little more of that, I said, eight, nine, if you include St. Teresa.
Right, not including St. Teresa. But it's a fairly dense focal point area, and while you're, while, I have a suggestion to go along with Commissioner Bolt. We need to see the site plan, and if we could do conditional zoning, I'm hearing a lot of people, it's my concern also, about the specific use of the civic zoning, not, to me, not as much as the project, that's my personal opinion. But we need to see the site plan, and if the site plan can be incorporated into a deed restriction, that might allay some people's concerns. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say something.
about 500 houses within that same five mile zone. And I know that because the fire station is very close to there. And I've read those figures in the past. Steve, you concur?
Yes, there's a little more of that. I said eight, nine hundred. If you include St.
Teresa.
Right, not including St. Teresa. But it's a fairly dense focal point area. And while you're, I have a suggestion to go along with Commissioner Bolt. We need to see the site plan. And if we could do conditional zoning, I'm hearing a lot of people, it's my concern also, about the specific use of the specific zoning, not, to me, not as much as the project. That's my personal opinion. But we need to see the site plan. And if the site plan can be incorporated into a deed restriction, that might allay some people's concerns. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say something about that. So, Mr. Pfeiffer, I just want to be clear that I understand what you're saying. You're asking potential developers to spend more money when they don't know for sure their zoning is going to get approved.
If I was in another jurisdiction, that would be standard, that to provide a site plan for the county commission to see and to look at before they would vote on a change in zoning. And conditional is virtually 100% of the time used in most jurisdictions. So that you don't know, so you don't get a pig and a poke. It's just not common here.
We hear them. Oh, let's see. Okay. He says about five, but nobody gave him a definite answer. All right, but anyway. Mr. Parker say, that thing been on commercial? Has it ever been commercial on the book, that area?
Commissioner, I think when the board adopted, and this, if Alan's still here...
Oh, he's not.
Okay, he probably has more historical knowledge. But back in the, you heard the reference to, I think it's Mr. Tuck's RV park or whatever the actual phraseology was. Mr. Tuck was the person who originally developed, I believe, the RV park back in probably the 60s or the 70s before we had zoning classification. So to my knowledge, as long as we've had a zoning map, it's been zoned commercial because it's always been an RV park up until you had the South Shoals development in the early 2000s. But Mark, is that consistently your historical knowledge, sir?
It was an RV park when I came here in 88. And it was zoned commercial to allow an RV park. And up until it was changed, RV park went out of business and the South Shoal development was proposed. It was zoned for RV park, C3 commercial.
Right. And South Shoals is roughly around the 2004, 2005 timeframe. And that one particular portion to the north was, has retained its C3 commercial zoning throughout. And that is what we're referring to.
Commissioners, what you see, excuse me, attorney.
Yes, sir.
What you see on the screen is, Ms. Kelly informed me that there was a site plan attached to the planning and zoning request that we tabled earlier. I don't know if this answers any questions or creates more questions. Mr. Parker, I ask him first before we brought it up, this document, if he would mind. He getting a problem with it, so.
Well, it's a public record, but...
I know, but, you know, just, and Mr. Dan Gork, just sit up, see what happens. That's not a bad thing to have. That's a compliment.
Dan Gork, for the record, yes, we were tabled until we get the rezoning scored away, but I was requested by Paul to come up with a conceptual site plan. Reason for this was to determine how the buildings would fit on the site and make sure that we met the specifications for Franklin County for parking. And also for stormwater, because this will be a commercial site plan, so it requires a Water Management District permit. So the, you know, and I guess with allowing some specificity is, I think, what you're looking for. And what this does is it shows you what we could do on the site. We've met the parking, based it on the area of itself for parking. We show a road on that side there, but Mr. Parker's mentioned that that road could be actually put on the other side where there's already a paved area on there. We already have water and sewer, so all these things can fit in. Obviously, this requires a C1 zoning before we change. As I understand it, the reason that we're talking about C1 is because to do some type of aquaculture project, you can't do it in C3. You can do it in RV park, which baffles me because that's going to be a lot more traffic, obviously, than this would be. But nonetheless, the C1 allows some flexibility. It relieves the 50-foot setback from the wetlands line. And, but you still have to do a stormwater plan. So conceptually, this would work in what we're talking about doing. And once the concept is approved, after the zoning is approved, we still got to go to the state and get a Water Management District permit for this project. And you also note that the idea is to keep the buildings as far back landward from the water to stay out of the velocity zone as much as we can. That one in the front definitely is going to have to go on piles. The one in the back, maybe just up a couple feet or so. We're not sure about that yet. And you also note where the wetlands line is, but also, as some people have mentioned, there's an extensive wetlands area out there, tidal area.
Middle button.
Middle button?
No.
Middle.
There we go. You're aiming at the ceiling. Down.
Woo hoo. Anyway, just north of that wetlands line is, there's extensive marshland that generate in there. So I guess what I'm saying is that in anticipation of the zoning, we wanted to go ahead and make sure that we could provide a site plan that would work on the site. And that was the one that was, we tried to do that just to have it for the meeting so you could have that extra information for your approval or not approval, wherever you want to go with it. Any questions, I'll be happy to address it.
You still got to go to Tallahassee after they leave, you know?
Yep. As far as, the nice thing about the commercial site plan is that if you approve this, this is what they get. If somebody wants to come back in the future and wants to do something different, they got to come right back here and get approval again. If they go in the water, they got to get approval not only from the DEP, Water Management District, but also the Corps of Engineers. It's in a quiet preserve. There used to be an area for prohibition. The water's getting better. And that was because there were septic tanks all over Alligator Point. Now you can only have aerobic units on there, which I think Mr. Parker's got there now, which he would share with this site. And I think it's going to be like one bathroom in there. So the idea again is that if somebody wants to come back, has a future use, they're going to have to come back before y'all for new approval, for a new site plan. So what you see here is what you get, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, everybody know me. I believe in change and I believe in jobs. But I'm just one member.
Mr. Chairman, I continue to believe that we simply need, excuse me, we need a plan of care here in a direction on where we're going. I think that if we're going to modify this C1 zoning, before we do, we've got to look at what the modifications are. There's about 15 different concerns that folks have had about that entire project. And I believe we should build it into a narrative about what this project can look like and how we go forward for approving it in the future. I would say we table it and give the applicants some deadline time here. Let's expect to hear from you again in a few weeks or a month or two. And let's continue to hash this out.
A month or two. I ain't going on it, no month or two. Look, we going to do this on every proposal coming up here?
No, I don't think so. I think this is a very complex proposal. It is a residential neighborhood and it has many different implications. And by the notice of the folks that were here today, I think it's unique that we spend time on this particular project planning it out. Not every project, not every time, but this one certainly is very unique.
Well, that's why I was asking about the numbers, about how many people was around that area. I mean, if, from the numbers I'm getting, if more people stayed away than come, so they must be put.
How's your interpretation?
No, no, I think you see a concentration of folks who live in that area that are specifically impacted.
I think, we, look here, sir, are we doing this? Bail, I got a bail up in the back. We, it's our discussion. We listening at y'all. And I appreciate it. Y'all let us do our, what I'm, what I was saying, that's why I asked the question, how many people were staying there?
You're right. I can see what you're saying, that the population that spoke today is certainly a fraction of the people who live there. But if you look at the geography of where this is located and the topography of the land and the people around there, this is a concentrated issue. And I think that it impacts these people. And I really believe it's important that, particularly, this is a commercial issue. Also, I think it's the first of its kind on Alligator Point in that area. And I believe we just need to design it in a way that we set a protocol that makes it right for the concern of the folks who are there.
Mr. Burke, this is your district. And you got some concerns. We'll give you to the next meeting to get what you got up, get what you got to get up, what you need to do in the next meeting. And the rest of them, smoke your beer, we'll make our decision on it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if that's what you want, I'll stand by. It's your district. But the next meeting, we got to make a decision. Because Paul's spending his money. He wants to know what's going on. He's ready to do whatever he's going to do. I respect you. This is your district. To the next meeting, we'll make our decision. Is that fair?
No, it isn't. Because we've got, we're losing the entire Thanksgiving week coming up. I think that we ought to do it on the third week in December. Give time to get this thing right.
Is that fine with you, Paul? Okay.
Is that okay? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. And we'll make a decision on the 3rd of December, Paul.
Yeah, not the, what is that first date?
Yeah, 17th.
It'll be the 17th.
The 17th of December. That's a comfortable time to really work on this.
Is that fine with you?
Okay.
It's fine with me. I'll make a motion for that.
We have to have a specific time. So December, the second meeting in December, which is December 17th at 10:30, which was the original time for this public hearing.
And we'll make our decision.
Okay.
One more question, sir, before they make the motion. What about the planning and zoning? That's also delayed until then.
They've tabled that planning and zoning already.
Until after this, okay.
Until after the decision is made on the zoning matter. So the motion would be...
That sounds good.
The motion would be to table this rezoning request until December 17th at 10:30 a.m. here. Now, the reason we're tabling it to a specific date, time, and place is because we're not going to put another advertisement in the newspaper. So those of you that are here, remember that date, time, and place, December 17th, 10:30 here, for the continuation on the public hearing of this matter. Facebook your friends or something, but there will be nothing else in the newspaper noticing the public on this particular continuation hearing, okay? Mr. Chairman, may I ask her a question?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
On this issue, should we send our comments to Burke this time because he's not...
You should send your comments to as many people as you like, Commissioner Bolt, the county coordinator, Mr. Morone, so that he then can make sure that everyone else receives the same comments that Commissioner Bolt does.
Are we going to get anything to study before this meeting? I mean, that's the problem. I mean, we just, we just saw this today. We can't comment on the parking spaces or anything. How are we going to be able to?
Can we post this on the website, Mike?
I will.
We will post this application and this information on the county's website so that you then can go to the website and access this site plan and the other information, the application. Everything that we have in our file concerning this, we will post to that website. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask her a question?
Mr. Fling?
I was going to ask the same, just how many?
Here, come on.
The idea of, it's not going to affect over five, six, seven, eight hundred homes. I was just curious as to how many emails you received opposing this development or asking that it be tabled. I know that puts you on the spot. I'm sorry.
I didn't count the number. But I do know I had really no letters of support. But I do have a file of...
Let's see. May I have those?
What do you have to do?
These are the letters of opposition. They will be scanned and added to the documents, added to the website. So everyone will have access to those, okay?
If I could say one thing, most of the people in Alligator Point weren't even aware of this till 10 days ago. With more time, I think you'll see more people concerned. Thank you.
Well, I will mention, it was in the newspaper for two weeks, and it was posted on the property as well. And the adjacent property owners were notified.
What newspaper?
The Appalachia Cola Times.
Could we please vote on our motion? None of this has anything to do with our motion to table.
All right. I got a motion on the floor. Motion come from you, Rick?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mast. And we're going to table this to 17th December, 10:30.
I'll post all the information to the website.
Everything will be on the website. Post it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All the polls, passing none.
The agenda.
All right, Commissioners, at the time we're approaching right here before lunch, what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, recommend an agenda change. Allow the clerk, let's go out of order, allow the clerk to present her two items to the board. We break for lunch and then we come back for the third public hearing. That public hearing could also run as long or longer than this one.
Okay.
If you don't have any problems with that. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, do that.
So if you would call the clerk for her report now, and then we'll break for lunch. And then it could be an hour and a half from whenever we break for lunch. Hour, 15 minutes, whatever.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson, clerk of the court.
Mr. Chairman, I'm only a parent. Do this report because it's the expertise of mine.
Okay.
I have seven resolutions for adoption on unanticipated revenues as part of the year-end fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your original adopted budget because at the time they were unanticipated. All funds have been spent. Approval is needed to comply with Florida Statute 129 to incorporate these funds into your 1819 budget. The first resolution is $173,894 received from the Florida Tourism Industry Marketing Corporation for Visit Florida promotional activities. The second resolution is $20,557 received from the Florida Department of Health for payment of expenses relative to pesticide purchases for the prevention of the Zika virus. The third resolution is $139,100 in insurance proceeds received from the Florida League of Cities for the repairs made to the equipment at the county jail after a lightning strike. The fourth resolution is $11,000 received from Duke Energy relative to providing storage for sea oats as part of the Sea Oat Restoration Project. The fifth resolution is $46,195 received from state and federal FEMA funds relative to the storm damage repairs made to the Indian Creek Boat Ramp. The sixth resolution, $48,264 received from the Florida Department of Education by the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. These funds were used to pay expenditures relative to the School Guardian program. The seventh resolution is $52,432 received from the Big Ben Mental Health Program by the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. These funds were used to pay expenditures relative to that program at the Sheriff's Department. And now I will read the formal resolutions. This is a resolution, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, whereas Franklin County is a political subdivision of the state of Florida and subject to Florida Statutes Chapter 129 regarding the preparation of budgets, and whereas Florida Statutes 129.06 provides for budget amendments for unanticipated revenues, and whereas Franklin County has received unanticipated revenues in the amount of $173,894 from the Florida Tourism Industry Marketing Court for Visit Florida grants, and whereas said revenue is needed to pay certain expenditures incurred in fiscal year 2018, 2019, and whereas Florida Statute 129.06, Section 2D, provides for budget amendments in relation to receipts and expenditures of the nature that is received, and whereas this section requires the Board of County Commissioners to spread upon its minutes the expenditures for the purpose of promotional activities, $173,894. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners appropriates these unanticipated revenues in the amount of $173,894 in the tourist development fund in order to comply with Florida Statute 129, Section 2, Part D. This resolution, adopted by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, this 19th day of October 2019.
Unless y'all want her to, we don't have to read all the resolutions. We can just, they'll be spread in the minutes. She gave you the... She gave you the seven resolutions, what they each dealt with, so we need a motion just to approve those as the first part of the report.
I make a motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, I mean Commissioner Mastin.
It both works.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, none?
Okay. Good.
Okay, item number two, we have action, where action, the Finance Department needs the following budget amendments to move budgeted values from one line item to the other. Go ahead and read those. Okay, okay. The budget amendment below is needed to adjust the line items to cover the cost of a shared vehicle that was purchased jointly by the Mosquito Control Department and the Road Department. We are decreasing mosquito control pesticides, and we're increasing mosquito control machinery and equipment for $17,333. Number two, the budget amendment below is needed to adjust the line items to move budgeted funds for the Emergency Management CERT grant to the appropriate expenditure line items. We are decreasing Emergency Management Other Contract Services, $20,000. Increasing Emergency Management CERT operating expenses, $1,002.05. Increasing Emergency Management Machinery and Equipment, $4,800. The budget amendment below is needed to move budgeted funds from general boat ramp repairs to the Indian Creek Park boat ramp repair line item for the local match on a FEMA project. We are decreasing County Commission boat ramp repairs, $6,548. We are increasing County Commission Indian Creek Park, $6,548. And number four, the budget amendment below is needed to adjust line items relative to the system shared by the property appraiser and tax collector. We are decreasing County Commission repair and maintenance, $13,918, and increasing County Commission repair and maintenance for the tax system, $13,918. And our action needed is motion to approve the line item budget amendments.
Second?
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, none?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say also, I really like that Section A where you had a shared vehicle between two departments. That's really efficient money spent within our county, and I've seen that before, I like it a lot.
That's it? Done? Okay, Commissioners, we could break until 1:30, and we'll be back at 1:30, reconvene, and we'll do the third public hearing that was on your list. Can't remember the item number at the moment. And then it'll be my report, and that should pretty much sum up the afternoon.